Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for Thursday, March the 28th. If you have a cellphone with you, now is a really good time to turn it down, please. Or off, as the case may be, or Wi-Fi, or, I mean, Air-Fi, what do they call it? Airplane mug. Okay. For those of you who aren't here every other Thursday, the way this works is, we have a little bit of housekeeping here we'll do at the beginning, and then when we get to the portion of the agenda where we're going to hear the individual items, we'll ask each of the applicants to come forward, give us their name and address, tell us what it is they're asking us for. We may or may not have questions of them. If there's anybody else here who wishes to be heard on the item, we'll ask them to come forward as well, either in support or opposition, and do the same thing. We may or may not have questions of them. Then we may or may not discuss the item amongst ourselves, and we'll vote on each item in turn. If you wish to be heard on an item, you'll find some forms like this on the table out in the hallway. If you would fill one out, it just makes it easier for us to sort of keep track of who's here, who wants to be heard, and then later if we need to get in touch with you for whatever reason, we'll have that information. So we'll start with, and, we received the minutes from the March 14th Planning Commission hearing.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, a second to receive the minutes of the March 14th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. Would you cast your votes, please? They are received. We're down three commissioners today, which means, I think we only have one item for variance today, so it really shouldn't be a problem. We'll see how we do. Next, we have continuances. These are requests for continuance of items that were scheduled to be heard today.
Okay. There are two uncontested requests for continuance on your agenda, item B-21 for case B-18 to defer to April 11th, and item B-22 on the agenda for case PV-105 to also defer to April 11th.
Is there anybody here today that thought they wanted to be heard on either one of those items? If not, I'll take a motion.
Motion to continue items, as it were.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to continue items 21 and 22. Would you cast your votes, please? They are continued.
We've also received several new requests for continuance on your agenda, item B-14 for CPA 19-02 to defer to May 9th. Item B-15 for case PC 10-576 has been withdrawn. Item B-18 for PUD 1757 to defer to April 11th. Item 19, which is CE 988, also to April 11th. And item B-20 for CE 979, also to April 11th.
I noticed that I have Mr. Bill Porch signed up to speak on items 18, 19, and 20. We're about to continue these items for two weeks, which means that they'll be heard at our next regularly scheduled meeting. Is Mr. Porch here? Will you be able to return and visit with us then?
Yes, that should be fine.
So is it all right with you if we go ahead and continue them now? So, I'll take a motion in a second to continue these items. I'm sorry.
I have a question on CP 1757, may continue April 11th, because that's supposed to be CP 1715?
I'm sorry, yes, it probably is. Did we misread that? Yes, it is 1715. You're absolutely right.
Thank you for catching that.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Motion to continue additional items, as it were.
Second. I have a motion and a second to continue items 14, 15, 18, 19, and 20. Would you cast your votes, please? Those items are continued. One of them is withdrawn. The other four were continued. So we have certain items on our agenda that are listed under a consent docket. These are items that are regular, that are fairly routine, for which we haven't received any protest, and they are likely enough to be approved, that we group them all together and vote on them with one vote. Will you read this for us?
I'll read them in for the record. Item number one is case CE 989. This is to close easements in the area south northeast 23rd Street between I-235 and the Capitol. Item number two is ED 226. It's an easement dedication of Classen Court between Northwest 57th and Northwest 58th. Item three is case PC 10-569, a rezoning of 1446 North Rockwell from the O-2 district to the R-4 district. Item four is case PC 10-570 to rezone 13700 Southeast 31st Street from AA District to RA 2 District. Item five is case PC 10-572 to rezone 25219 Southwest 59th Street from the R-4 District to the C-3 District. And item six is case PC 10-574 to rezone 1432 Northeast 12th Street from R-1 to R-2.
I have one person signed up to speak on item number one. Gladys Stevens. Did you wish to address us on this issue today?
I just had a question.
Come forward, please. Give us your name and address. Please.
I'm not familiar at all with this. I just want to know what it meant and if I had to move. Are they, am I moving or what? I don't know anything about it.
This application is just to close the easements and streets in that area, so there's no action taken for any type of building or anything like that.
So, but how will I get to my house if they close the street?
I think this is just an easement closing.
Just an easement.
The streets would remain until the time that they're filed with the state to close a street, and that's a process that's done through the state at that point.
Okay. That's all I need. Thank you.
Is that correct, JJ? Okay.
Anybody else that wished to be heard on any of those items? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move approval of the consent docket.
Have a motion, a second to approve items 1 through 6. Would you cast your votes, please? They are approved.
Moving on to items requiring a separate vote. Item number seven is case PC 10-573 to rezone 3201 Northwest 150th from the R-4 District to the O-2 Office General District.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Dwight Butler with Anchor Engineering for the applicant. We have no TEs, however, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions I can.
Do we have any questions, Mr. Butler?
The only question I had was, in the staff report, it mentions that there is a 50-foot wide strip of undeveloped land between the existing apartment complexes constructed and this parcel that you're pulling out of the current zoning. What is the purpose of that 50-foot strip of land?
That would become an entry road for a subdivision I'm designing back behind the apartments at this time.
Okay.
It would be dedicated to the public.
Would that entrance be 200 feet from the existing curb cut that serves the apartment complex now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just curious, I have a question for future. Thanks.
You bet.
Do we have any other questions? Is there anybody else here today that wanted to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval on PC 10-573. Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve item number seven. Would you cast your votes, please? It's approved.
Thank you very much.
Item eight is case PC 10-566 to rezone 2515 Northwest 1st Street from R-1 District to I-2 Moderate Industrial.
Is the applicant present? Let's shift this to the heel of the docket.
Moving on to item nine for case PC 10-575 to rezone 3826 Newcastle Road from R-1 to I-2 Moderate Industrial.
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson here on behalf of the applicant. This zoning application is being submitted to create a contiguous I-2 use from the property that you see on your screen labeled I-2 and the property in the rear of that that's currently being utilized as I-2. So, the subject tract is this piece here. It's surrounded by R-1 zoning. The existing I-2 tract is this, and it's being used as I-2 in conjunction with this tract, so it's all owned by one owner, and so they want, the new owner wants to make sure he meets all current criteria, so we want to bring this up to current standards. It's currently a non-conforming use. Just by way of OKC Plan, this blue area is the area identified in Plan OKC as heavy industrial, so obviously we fall in line with that. The line was almost struck, it seems, like to pick up this corner, because this was being used as industrial use at the time the plan was done. We've done some homework to determine if any, the changeover, change odor, excuse me, changeover of, I didn't drink enough at lunch, changeover of residential uses in the area. All but two tracts have changed over from the time we can see in 1990 that it was being used with the existing metal building as an I-2 use. So all but two residential units have turned over, so they've bought with this steel solid fence around this property, understanding that that's a yard that has been used. And there's nothing to say it hadn't, it wasn't used prior to 1990. This is just the oldest picture we could find on Google that showed the buildings. And so finally, the, so everything in yellow is residential. This is R-1, but we're proposing it to be I-2. The interesting facts are, as I mentioned, we believe that it's been operated for 50 to 60 years as an I-2 use. We cannot find a deed exchanging this property prior to 1974. Obviously, the staff report recommends approval, we think because it's in conformance with the Plan OKC and the fact that it's been used for nearly 30 years as such. Of the 21 of the 23 properties have changed since 1990, as I mentioned. Only two houses were purchased prior to that. We have not received any protests, and our client would like to continue the continuity of the I-2 uses. The I-2 zoning actually has more restrictive setbacks and requirements adjacent to R-1 than I-1 does. So that's why in meeting with the staff, we suggested we come in with the I-2, and as any building permits are issued on this tract of land, then they would have to adhere the new I-2 uses with sidewalks and trees and things like that. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Johnson? Is there anybody here today that wanted to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
I recommend approval of PC 10-575.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve item number nine. Would you cast your votes, please?
Thank you.
It is approved.
Item 10 is case CE 7059, the final plat of Split Tree. This also is requesting a variance to the subdivision regulations for the width of the access drive.
Again, Tim Johnson here on behalf of the applicant. I think we may be your only variance today, so I need all six of you. This is a, in the Meadowbrook neighborhood, as anybody who's been through that neighborhood, it's gone through a major change. Prices, values of homes have gone way up, and there's been a influx of developments such as what we're proposing, specifically on 56th Street, but also in other parts of the neighborhood. So we've got a tract of land that's been acquired. It was owned in kind with the split T retail that's been purchased by our same applicant. If you've been by there, they've already started renovations on that and had the building painted, and it's already looking better. So this is a residential, single-family attached residential. We previously rezoned it into an SPUD that was approved. We are now coming back with the plat that we made specifically a requirement so that we can provide common areas that will allow for the public utilities to be extended, the services from the public utilities to be extended each lot individually, and that they can be commonly maintained by the whole homeowners' association. I was contacted by the president, Mr. Rob Lilfield of the Neighborhood Association, and he expressed some concerns, and to his credit, our plat did not have our standard notes on here that said an HOA is required and the common areas be maintained by the homeowners' association. So I've added those. I sent Rob a copy, and he has since sent us an email saying that the neighborhood's in support. I've also sent a copy to the staff, and obviously it'll be on the final plat going to council. There are no public utilities required to be installed as part of this plat, so it may go to council as soon as six weeks from now. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on this.
Commissioners, the Meadowbrook neighborhood is a genuinely unique area that is a combination of changing and upgrading residential development surrounded by retail and commercial development, which they wholeheartedly embrace, and they are, you know, very active in dealing with and communicating with applicants on both ends of the spectrum of development. They're in support of this application. We met just yesterday to discuss some final details on it, so if we don't have any questions, I'll ask if there's anybody here today that wanted to be heard on this item. They had indicated that they didn't feel the need to send a representative today, so. If we don't have any questions, Mr. Johnson, I'll take a motion.
Move approval of the final plat of Split Tree, CE 7059.
Second.
I'm sorry, yeah, we have to do our variance first.
Oh, variance. Totally forgot.
My bad.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve the variance to Section 5.4.2 E.2 of the subdivision regulations outlined in the report.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve a variance to item number 10. Would you cast your votes, please? It's approved.
And now I will. And now I will move approval of the final plat of Split Tree, CE 7059.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve the final plat of Split Tree. Would you cast your votes, please?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 11 is SP 521. This is a special permit to operate an emergency shelter and feeding site in the I-2 Industrial District located at 532 North Villa Avenue.
Good afternoon. I am Mark Seibold, an architect and city planner with Crafton Toll representing City Care. The project is a renovation of an existing warehouse in the I-2 District that will serve the homeless population 24, or 365 days a year. The addition of a few parking spaces and a driveway along General Pershing are the only exterior improvements planned at this point, other than a small yard to have an exterior enclosed space. City Care operates the Pershing Center directly to the east, and to the west and to the south are industrial properties. I'll entertain any questions.
And will the, will the operation of this facility be, I don't know exactly what word to use, complimentary to the Pershing Center?
It is. Same operational staff, but it will serve a different population as far as administratively and functionally. Yeah, it's a similar organizational structure, but different population. They'll be served from 6:00 in the evening until 6:00 in the morning.
How will people arrive at and depart from this location?
That's a good question. If there are any specific questions, Adam Luck, the CEO, is here to answer those. He's more than willing to answer any specific questions. There's a couple of options. There's multiple models from around the country that want to limit the impact of individuals coming to and leaving these facilities. We are still researching all those operational ideas and concepts at this point. Public transportation is available on General Pershing, but if we have any specifics, I can't address that specifically, but if you'd like to.
Would you come forward, please, for us? I just, I note that there is a school nearby, and they're constructing another one nearby.
Yes, they are. Yes, so, hello, my name is Adam Luck. I have the opportunity to serve as the chief executive officer at City Care. For context as well, I'd just like to reiterate our investment in this neighborhood. So in addition to the 60 housing units that we have under one roof directly to the east at the Pershing Center, we also own 54 homes in the Westland Gardens neighborhood and have had this investment over the last 24 years. So we have a significant interest in maintaining not just the safety and security of this neighborhood, but also we have a significant financial investment in this neighborhood in terms of the amount of property that we own in this area as well. So actually, the school that's under construction that directly to the northwest will be Positive Tomorrow's. So we've already got a partnership with Positive Tomorrow's, and this is the only school in Oklahoma City area that will be serving homeless children. So we will have a number of family suites available that will be partnering with Positive Tomorrow's to serve families that they are serving, who are in need of emergency housing. So we actually already have a partnership with them. Directly to the west of Positive Tomorrow's new school is North Care. They are the state's largest provider of indigent healthcare and mental healthcare for the indigent. They're in 47 out of the state's 77 counties, and their headquarters office is right there as well. So we've got a longstanding partnership with them in terms of the clients that we both serve. In addition to that, directly to the north of Positive Tomorrow's, in the plot directly to the north of them, Reemerge will be building their new program space. It's currently under construction right now. They are an alternative to incarceration program for mothers in the state of Oklahoma, and we have recently completed construction on six three-bedroom homes, again, in this neighborhood that we have created in partnership with Reemerge. So we own the physical structures, they provide the clients and the services, and we've got another four units under construction right now, and these are, these are being built through the National Housing Trust Fund grant that we received in partnership with Reemerge. So I just mentioned that all as just a little bit of context, that this neighborhood is actually very unique in terms of the clients that we're serving, the synergy that exists among the service providers, and we've all got a significant investment in making sure that this operation runs very smoothly. So to that extent, several months out of the year, last year, we spent traveling to other night shelters in Albuquerque, and Dallas, and Austin, and Tulsa to look at, in addition to national best practices, what it actually looks like on the ground. So we've made those relationships, and to Mark's point, we're really trying to figure out at this point what we would like to do. Several of the best practices that we have seen require individuals to be transported to and from the property by vehicle, so limiting as much as possible foot traffic to and from the area. So that's the approach that we're going to pursue. I think it will take some time to, one of the things that we're pursuing is a partnership with public transportation in Oklahoma City to facilitate that. Until we do, we have existing transportation infrastructure to work to transport individuals. So we also operate the Oklahoma City Day Shelter. We do that in partnership with the Homeless Alliance, and that's less than one mile to the east over off of Third and Virginia. So our plan is to be transporting individuals as the day shelter is closing by vehicle to the night shelter, and then when we're closing at 6:00 AM in the morning, transporting individuals from the night shelter, for those that are interested, to the day shelter to receive case management, meal services and shower services, and so on, that we're already providing at the day shelter. So our hope, again, just given the investment that we have in the neighborhood, we want to preserve that investment, safety and security of the neighborhood, we're going to work very hard to make sure that we limit the amount of foot traffic to and from the area. We've got great relationships with the businesses and homeowners in the neighborhood already, and we want to really make sure that we preserve that through this new operation. Yes?
I'm Cheryl DeJager. My husband and I own the property right next door at 520 North Villa, and we've run our automotive repair business there for 30 years, and I'm, it's very difficult. I actually embrace everything they're doing. I think it's wonderful. We're one of the small guys, though, in the buildings in between, and in this case, right next door, so we've got concern. We have a lot of theft in the area currently, and I just didn't know what this was going to look like to our customers as far as trusting their vehicles with us, what kind of health would affect an image perhaps that we need to have for our business, and that is a concern for us and possibly even the property value.
Would you like to, would you like to address those issues?
Yes, so just to start out with property value, this currently is an empty 8,600-square-foot warehouse. It has been empty for a little over a year, so this will be, in addition to the facility that we own directly to the east, a significant investment in the area, so we actually anticipate property values increasing. We acknowledge as well the inherent difficulties in working with this population. However, we believe very strongly that this is an essential city service. Currently, we do not have a low-barrier night shelter in the city of Oklahoma City. We used to have 640 beds at City Rescue Mission. Jesus House had an additional 120 beds. In the last two years, both of those programs have shifted the entirety of those beds to long-term program beds. What that resulted in was a 47% increase in the amount of unsheltered individuals in our city last year through the point-in-time count. So given our competency in operating a well-run day shelter facility, we felt confident that we could step into this need for our community, all the while maintaining our investment in the neighborhood and partnerships that we have with business owners and local homeowners in the area. So, one, just acknowledge that, yes, it's going to be difficult, but we also want to maintain our commitment to business owners and homeowners in the area to have an open dialogue about how things are going, what problems are existing and coming up as a result of this night shelter, should it be approved, and just maintaining and working a relationship to address those issues. So I don't want to discount at all that there are absolutely concerns with serving this population. However, I believe that, one, it's an essential city service that we absolutely need, and I think City Care is well-positioned, given our competency and experience and investment in this neighborhood, to do that operation with excellence and maintain the safety and security of the neighborhood.
Could I suggest that you all exchange information, contact information, so that as this process is moving forward, and even once it's established, you have a way of staying in touch very directly with each other about how it's going, and this is, this is a request for a special permit, so we do have the ability to sort of monitor that over time and make sure that it's going well and see what kind of problems, if any, if they develop, you know, need to be dealt with. So I would, I would strongly encourage you to stay in touch and to stay connected.
Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll exchange information.
Did you have any other questions or concerns, comments you wanted to make? Please come forward. Give us your name and address.
Good afternoon. My name's Johannes DeJager, and I own the property next door and about four across the road, so we're around the center that's applying for the permit. Over the years, we've had indigents in the back of our property in North Villa on the opposite side of the road. It was all bush and forest type area, and there's been multiple, multiple times the police had to come out to take the people away because they're camping around there, and they, they get up to mischief, and they get into the cars and the businesses and the, you know, and there's robberies, like we've had four robberies, and we must have had more than 100 thefts, you know, cut the, cut the fence, steal things, and, you know, the police can affirm that because we've got lots and lots of police reports. And we were just wondering, you know, if those people had to come back. We just, just got them out now because they've plowed it, and I believe they're going to, some aeronautical center's going to be built on the back. But we've just got rid of them, and I'm just very worried that those very same people are going to come back there.
And I think, you know, they're acknowledging that that is an issue.
Yeah.
and with us in terms of, you know, if there are issues that develop as this project moves forward, we'll want to know about that.
Okay. If, if situation gets worse with them, we will have to move, and we've been invested, therefore, since 1980. So, you know, out of the four properties, since 1980, I'd hate to see us move now.
So would I.
You know, it's been a nice business area. It's on the main street, and I love the idea of taking care of homeless people, but there are places that are not, that are not in the commercial area, and there's a lot of little businesses up and down, you know, and Arrow Recce and what have we, and the security problem's probably the number-one thing, and then, of course, it's going, it's not going to look nice if we have 100 indigents outside during the day and the customers come by for their cars and for service and what have we. We're a little disturbed about that, but, you know, if it's going to be done, then, you know, we might have to look at an alternative to sell, to move, or to do something.
Well, I hope not. I hope that this'll, this, this'll prove to be a compatible use, that, that it will not develop the concerns that you have, but we'll want to know.
Sure.
As it moves forward, if you have problems, so.
Certainly. Thank you.
Keep in touch with us.
Thank you.
And I'll add a personal note. You've, you've worked on three of my previous cars, so I'm a customer, and I've left my vehicle overnight in your, in your yard, so. One specific note is, we are looking at a comprehensive video surveillance system to make sure that the neighborhood is surveilled. Obviously, we have the yard between your north property and the south property, and we want to make sure the programming of that is controlled in a safe area, and so, between the comprehensive video surveillance, and we're also orienting the entrance to General Pershing. And so, the primary entrance should be into and out of General Pershing, and so, that's another change. So, we feel like that the traffic that will be generated, you know, staff and people coming, both volunteers and community leaders, this is kind of a catalyst project that it has to go well in order for the rest of the neighborhood to see it as a success. So, if you have my information, please call me if you have any questions or concerns. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wanted to be heard on this item today? Commissioners?
Is this a come-and-go facility? Or, when people get there, you know, transport the people in, and so, they're free to just leave when they want to and come back when they want to, or how does that work?
So, we will have a certain amount of hours from the time that we open until probably about eight in the evening where they can, where they can be outside, but then after eight in the evening until we close in the morning, they'll have to stay indoors. So, that will be, as Mark mentioned, we'll have part of the program space available in Finston where they can be outside if they're not ready to go to sleep and they want to be outside, but it will be enclosed within the property, and then there'll be night hours where they have to be, they cannot leave the property, and if they do, they can't come back.
I have a question, but it's more for staff. In our staff report, it's, under the additional specific standards, it says, "Staff in its report to Planning Commission, City Council shall identify other uses in the following use units within one mile of proposed facility." It provides a list, and then it provides, staff provides us a list of what qualifies under that provision, and then it goes on to say, "The inordinate concentration of these use units is discouraged, and locations dispersed throughout the community are promoted." Can you tell me what an inordinate concentration of these units is? I didn't figure you could.
It's really a decision for the City Council. We give them the information of what's there, and they look at it and decide if that's an inordinate concentration.
Yeah. I mean, it seems to me, from a policy perspective, as the applicant articulated, this is an area where these folks are going to have walkable access to services that if it were anywhere else, they wouldn't. Healthcare services, school services for children, if there is a place it should be, I think this is probably it. So, I'm a little, I guess I'm a little troubled by that policy, just in the sense that, you know, it's, it's not like these folks are going to get in their cars and drive across town to...
Right, but prior to this current ordinance requirement, there was a one-mile separation between these uses required.
Wow.
At least now, the council's taking a look at that and making a determination.
So, they've made it deliberately subjective so they can just analyze an area and determine whether or not...
Yes, it was a strict requirement, a mile separation.
Understood.
And that goes back a long, long way. When dealing with these kinds of issues became less of an institutional approach and response, and more of a community approach and response, there was a lot of pushback in various municipalities around the country with respect to the location of these services in their communities. And so, they tended to concentrate, and I think there was litigation even, you know, where it was determined that that's not appropriate for, you know, these kinds of uses to be sort of quarantined in a given area or relegated to a particular portion of the city. And so, you know, initially, the, the approach was just to set a limit. They had to be this distance apart. There are some, as you very properly identified, some values in locating them near other uses that are services that they need to access, and so, I think it was just determined that that needed to be a little bit more of a flexible approach, keeping in mind that it is, it is not a good idea for them to be, you know, herded together or quarantined to any particular area or district of the city. So, it's just an effort to strike that balance, I think.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioners?
If there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to, we recommend approval to City Council on SP 521.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 11. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Item 12 is SP 522. This is a special permit to operate a drinking establishment use in the C-3 district located at 5617 South Pennsylvania Avenue.
Oh, I'm Thomas Mara. As she said, 5617 South Pennsylvania. I had prepared some slides. Nobody has those? Okay. It's going to be a community bar, next slide. It'll seat 34 individuals. It already is zone C-3. The marketing is going to be to locals in the community. There's not going to be any live music, no karaoke, no dance floor, so it really will be a local situation. If you look at my landlord, Party City Liquor, there's, it's not like I'm trying to put in something absolutely new in the strip mall. Party City Liquor dominates that, that mall. In terms of safety, all of my staff have been certified as completing an alcohol awareness program. All of the inspections have been done by the fire department and the health department. All of my staff have experience in bartending. A blood alcohol chart is going to be posted on the premises, and I think, unique in the industry, we're going to have a designated driver program, which is that if somebody brings somebody with them who is not going to consume alcohol, they're going to be rewarded, and that the reward is they can get free soda pops, or chips, or snacks. Of course, we have a food safety certificate, and there's camera surveillance on the property. I am requesting a parking variance. My landlord has allocated 17 spaces in the parking lot, three in the front and all 14 in the back. I currently have about 2,000, 200 square feet of usable space, and the Oklahoma City Planning Department says, says that that is sufficient space for over 100 people. There's no way I can pack 100 people in there. I'm only, only going to have seating for 34, and I would welcome an occupancy limit of 35, 34, whatever, so I wouldn't need those additional, it's now only three parking spaces because I do have a memorandum of understanding with my neighbor to have three of hers. I have tables that'll seat 16, next slide, a cocktail table that'll seat six, next slide, the bar will actually seat 12, and currently, if I don't have to decrease the size, I have room for a billiard table in the middle, next slide, but I could shrink the space, and I'll show you what that would look like, by building two walls, next slide. I could put in a wall there, but you can see it basically turns the bar into an alleyway. I would lose space for the tables, and all of the billiard table would be gone, next slide, and I'd lose my dartboard and my rollerball. I want people to be able to do things besides drink when they're there.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Yes.
Is it Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Let me stop you for a minute. JJ? My staff report doesn't say anything about, there are no TE's, it doesn't say anything at all about the parking.
I'm not aware of the need for a parking variance. I can't, I'd be very surprised if he doesn't have enough parking with this being a retail center. If, if there's only a few spaces short, I'm sure there's a way we can come up with a way to maybe reduce this number of spaces required by adding bike racks or something, or some landscaping. We'll, we'll work with him. If he needs a variance, we'll get him to, to the Board of Adjustment, but I'm, I'd be very surprised if that's the case.
Okay.
The max are only three. If he can't do anything about parking here today.
What we can't do is, is grant you a variance today because it's not, it's not...
Could you limit the occupancy?
No, just for that, I'm not sure we need to. I'm not sure we need to. I think probably we'll vote on the application as it stands. I don't think that you need to jump through these hoops. I think you probably have what...
I've been jumping through a lot of hoops, I tell you.
I, I think, I think probably you have what you need, frankly, and if not, then you have the commitment of J.J. Chambliss, that he's going to find a way to make it happen, so.
Okay.
Do we have any questions of our applicant? No?
Might have been the most thorough special permit application for a drinking establishment I've ever seen.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mara, well done.
I wish they were all that thorough. Is there anybody else here who wanted to be heard on this item today? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll move approval on SP 522.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 12. Would you cast your votes, please? It's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Item 13 is SP 523. It's another special permit to operate a theater that serves alcohol in PUD 1584.
Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Randy Malone, 209 Southwest 89th, Suite F, Oklahoma City. Flick's Brew House, this is a 38,000-square-foot, square-foot facility. It's a brew pub, restaurant, movie theater, and entertainment facility. Any questions? There's several across the United States. They're based out of Austin.
Yeah, this is a kind of a new thing for us here.
All right.
To, to mix uses, but also to have places that serve alcohol that are open to people under the age of 21. At least, they're relatively new. I guess they're becoming much less unique. So, explain to me, if you know, how that will work at this particular location, that you're serving alcohol and there are people that are under 21.
Well, first of all, almost every restaurant in the state does that, that has a mixed beverage license, but it's going to work pretty much the same way. If they go into a movie theater, they're required to have wristbands, that's state law, that, that shows are under 21, or over 21, if you're drinking, I should say, and I'm not sure what your question is, other than that.
Well, you, you've told me something I didn't know. I didn't know that state law required them to do the wristbands. I thought that was only one of several options available. Is, as a method to...
Yes.
Separate. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions, if Mr. Malone? We don't have any TE's. Is there anybody else here who wanted to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move approval of item 13.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 13. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 14 was continued, and item 15 was withdrawn. Item 16 is PUD 1713 to rezone 2125 Northeast 28th Street from R1 and R2 to the PUD 1713 district.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates here on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Ian Kogan is also here with the Oklahoma City Housing Authority. This is probably one of the most exciting projects I've worked on in several years. This is a, a great reuse of some properties that the Housing Authority already owns. The site is located south of 30th Street to approximately 26, Northeast 26th Street, and it's on the east side of Martin Luther King Boulevard. There are current duplexes on 28th, I'm sorry, 29th Street, 28th. Those are already owned by the Housing Authority. They have recently acquired this vacant tract of land, which has really kind of pulled this project together. And so, the application, the application that you have before you today includes a master plan that illustrates the type of housing that's being proposed. We are requesting some commercial use restricted to this tract. This is the vacant piece that we talked about. As part of that, there'll be townhomes and single-family detached potentially in that area. There's a community center proposed here that will serve not only this newly-developed housing project, but the current neighborhood as well. There's a linear street here that's Granada Boulevard. It was never developed as a public street. It has utilities in it, has a big storm sewer in it. We're going to work with Public Works to create a linear park there as part of the development. We've worked with Public Works currently on coming up with methods of traffic calming along 28th Street, as it is the street that does cut through to the east. We are showing a circulation plan that shows where we potentially will have pedestrian crosswalks and perhaps some traffic calming. We're looking to do some parallel parking on-street and creating bumpouts for landscaping and safe crossing areas. We're hopeful that we can work with the Traffic Division and Public Works to put some very small neighborhood roundabouts on 28th Street, and that's something that's becoming more and more popular for traffic calming. And then, the black lines you see are kind of the pedestrian pathways that'll be developed throughout the whole neighborhood. So, the, the goal is to tie the neighborhoods together with the different types of housing. There'll be senior housing up in this area, fourplex or eightplex here, the retail with LiveOver, and then the townhome style, pulling the access to the units away from the street, pushing the units up to the street, and putting the parking really behind the development. So, it's a very well-thought-out project, and it's an exciting area, and we've done a bunch of work on the west side of Martin Luther King, and this whole area's just changing. It's, it's exciting to see. So, before you today is the PUD that allows us to do what we're showing. We do have a couple of additional uses we, we have, that have come up since our application. We're hopeful that we can work with the Traffic Division and Public Works to put some very small neighborhood roundabouts on 28th Street. And that's something that's becoming more and more popular for traffic calming. And then the black lines you see are kind of the pedestrian pathways that'll be developed throughout the whole neighborhood. So the goal is to tie the neighborhoods together with the different types of housing. There'll be senior housing up in this area, fourplex or eightplex here, the retail with live-over, and then the townhome style, pulling the access to the units away from the street, pushing the units up to the street, and putting the parking really behind the development. So it's a very well-thought-out project, and it's an exciting area. And we've done a bunch of work on the west side of Martin Luther King, and this whole area is changing, and it's exciting to see. So before you today is the PUD that allows us to do what we're showing. We do have a couple of additional uses that have come up since our application. One of them is the addition of the daycare use to be allowed in the senior living center. It does not specifically say that in the PUD. We want to add that in Section 8.1, so that in Track 1, we can request, we will request that we add the language "childcare centers be permitted within the senior living." And then in Section 9.3, we want to clarify that the existing vegetation be permitted to satisfy the screening requirement. If vegetation is damaged or removed during the construction, a six-foot planting strip of six-foot evergreens will be planted in its place. This area is heavily wooded. I think you can see best this one. So there's a lot of heavy screening up here, and this is a low area. We're going to put a detention facility in here. So that's the area that we're looking at to not have to go back there and plow trees to build a fence. We want to use the existing vegetation for the screening. So just for the record, our new language would read "site per screening would be required along the north property lines. Said screening shall consist of not less than six-foot or nor greater than eight-foot high wall, green belt, planting strip, no less than six feet in width, with evergreen trees six-foot in height, and spaced in a manner to provide an impervious visual barrier. Existing vegetation may satisfy this requirement." So that's our two adds to the PUD, and we'll get those submitted to the staff. And lastly, there are two TEs of the three that we have a little trouble with, and we've visited a little bit with Sarah on these. So TE number one, it talks about to designate a common area within Track 1 along the Deep Fort Tributary that encompass the acreage within 100 feet from the stream channel. The problem we have with that is that, first of all, the FEMA floodplain stops way north of our property. These are local tribes, a very small drainage basin here, and so what we're proposing on that is we will run stormwater models, and that all of the 100-year storm will be contained in a common area. And so that's typically what we do in a residential subdivision, for example. We think that the 100-foot setback from the threat of the stream would be an extraordinary setback and would really eliminate the ability to develop this strip of property right here. And then it would also, you know, curtail being able to utilize that creek as an amenity for the area. So that's TE 1. So what we'd like to do is we can agree to study the stream that bisects the site to contain the 100-year floodplain in a common area. We do agree with TE number 2. And with TE number 3, there was some concern by the staff about the orientation of the buildings, of the commercial buildings, and I think we want to simplify TE number 3 to say, including the architectural regulations, that buildings with commercial use should provide frontage oriented towards the arterial street. And that's the change we would like to make. And so that, the arterial street and 28th Street, so some of this retail here, you can't see it on this very well. This building is really fronting 28th Street, so we would want all of our retail to have its front door facing the street that's serving it. And that's the intent of the PUD. We'll change the language to make sure that's clear. We just didn't like the way TE 3 was drafted, so I talked through that with Sarah yesterday. I think the staff's okay with that. And with that, I'll be happy to answer your questions.
A couple. One, and I've visited with the developer, Tim and Mark, about it. In visiting with Councilwoman Nice since our meeting, she mentioned some concern about Track 2 and the alcohol sales, and I guess the sit-down restaurant as far as alcohol sales, and also some concern about the permitted use with the fast food. Do you all have plans to put a fast food in Track 2?
No. The, and I have to go back and read that section, but there's no fast food use anticipated. I think we have that same language in there about the possibility of a coffee shop or a deli, but nothing that's a drive-through fast food use. Any alcohol use would be tied to a restaurant use that might locate here. There's not going to be a bar or anything like that.
Oh, go ahead.
There are eating establishments, fast food, eating establishments, drive-in, eating establishments, fast food with drive-through or the window in Track 2. Are you saying you're okay with eliminating those?
I would think so. I think that was just a miss on our part. We should have taken those out.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And just to be clear, on Track 1, with the senior independent living, you mentioned wanting to allow that, allow the daycare service? I'm just trying to make sure I was following.
That's correct. So there's been studies done to show that it's both beneficial for the seniors as well as the children for daycare uses to be located within senior care centers. And so we wanted to have that use unit added. That's the only use unit we're adding to Track 1, to allow the daycare to be permitted there. It's already permitted in the area that we're doing the community center.
So it's, so just for, so I understand from the staff, from that perspective, so even though both uses are separately permitted, we have to give a special, we have to give a special approval for both uses to occur at the same time?
Because it was eliminated in Track 1, we want to add it to Track 1.
Okay. What is the use unit, Tim? What's the use unit number? Do you recall?
Um...
I'm guessing that's the issue, is that it's a separate use unit?
I did not write the use unit down.
J.J., you got those memorized, right?
Yeah.
Sorry, I couldn't resist.
I apologize, I do not know what that use unit is.
But it's not... Sorry, it's not 8300.2 Adult Daycare Facility?
Is it the Childcare Center, 8300.25?
That's it.
Childcare Center.
Thank you.
But see, that's already permitted use.
It's Track 2.
It's Track 2.
It's, I see it in Track 1.
It's in Track 1.
Further restricted to operations within the Community and Education Center. That's what it says in Track 1.
Okay, so really, we would just be getting rid of that one?
Senior Center.
Okay, so we need to change that to modify from community center to seniors, senior living?
I'm sorry, the community center is the building on the right side of the creek.
In Track 2.
Building A is the senior center.
So we're wanting to add the senior center, not change it or eliminate it, but just add it?
That's correct, add it to the A.
You know, I had that question as I was looking through this, whether you might not want to do that.
Just to be clear, we'll take out all the use units relative to fast food.
So I had the same question, actually, with respect to the retail sales and services. Is that something that you would want to see inside the senior center as well as the community center, or not?
Not, I mean, it's not anticipated at this time.
Anybody else?
Then just another question about the TEs. You're wanting to eliminate TE 1, or what was the change to?
No, we do TE 1 to allow us to do a flood study that would be prepared at the time of platsumetal, and that we would contain the 100-year floodplain within a common area, as opposed to 100-foot setback on either side.
So you could amend the language to effectively say something like designate a common area in Track 1 along the Deep Fort Tributary that will contain the 100-year floodplain detention? Is that, is that...
That would be, that would take care of it instead of the 100-foot setback.
And, yeah, I would need you to rephrase that.
No, we agree with TE 2.
And then will you repeat what you set up as the language you would like for TE 3?
Yes, ma'am. So what we'd change the language in the PUD to include language that says that the architectural regulations for the buildings that, for retail, that they are oriented, that their facades, their front doors basically, are oriented towards the streets that serve them. So for the most part, it's MLK, but there's one building that faces north to 28th Street.
Wouldn't it just be a little cleaner to say MLK or 28th?
We can do that.
Is there some objection there from staff, or anyone else for that matter? That would certainly seem cleaner to me than...
We'll be specific.
Yep. I like that.
Is there anybody else here who wanted to be heard on this item today? Commissioners, do you have any other questions, comments, concerns? Can I get a motion?
I'm going to do my best. Move the approval of item 16 with the following changes, that we are, just to make sure we're clear, adding the, we're adding the adult daycare facility as a permitted use in Track 1?
No, it's childcare.
Childcare. Okay. Childcare use in Track 1. And we are... Okay, wait a second, Tim, sorry. The other change you wanted on the screening?
Right, that's Section 9.3.
9.3, at the sentence that ends, "provide an impervious visual barrier." Tim wanted to insert the language "existing vegetation shall satisfy this requirement."
Correct. That's it.
Period. Said wall shall be constructed, da-da-da. So we'll make the change to Section 9.3 as read by Commissioner Cravens, and amend TE 1, and to change the words to read designate a common area in Track 1 along the Deep Fort Tributary that will contain a 100-year floodplain detention.
Within a common area.
Within a common area. Change TE 3 to require that buildings that have a commercial use should face the, should face Martin Luther King or 28th Street.
Correct.
We're going to eliminate the fast food, drive-in, the drive-through, uses.
34, 35, and 36, 8300. And we want to eliminate 8300.35 and .36 and 34 from permitted uses in Track 2. Very simple, very simple changes. That's everything.
Sorry, I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 16 as amended. Would you cast your votes, please?
Thank you for your patience.
Item 17 is PUD 1714 to rezone 13100 Northwestern Avenue from PUD 1544 to PUD 1714.
I'm chairman, members of commission Brian Coon, representing the applicant S&amp;B Development. This property is northwestern, just south of Kilpatrick Turnpike, and is now just south of the new Costco building, that you all have probably seen. When the original PUD came through, we had two office buildings, two medical buildings, 60,000 square foot buildings. At that time, there was Topgolf to our west, and that was it. So things have changed out there considerably, considering the Chisholm Creek development to the west, Signal at the corner at Pawnee Drive, and now the new Costco. So the doctors who own the building that is built and is mostly occupied have tried to rethink their plan of what they want to do on the property with Costco 50 feet away from their property line now. So what we're requesting is that we are turning this into two tracks instead of just one. And with two tracks, if they sell Track 2, Track 1 is currently developed, Track 2 would be something they could sell to another user, if someone else wanted to build another building, they would need a sign for Track 2. So one for Track 1, one for Track 2. No taller than 12 feet high, monument sign, 200 square foot, which is a lot smaller than the one you see across the street at Pawnee Drive at the entrance of Chisholm Creek, I think it's got Chisholm Creek. So we've asked for a few additional uses. Staff wanted us to add a few more uses. They wanted us to add congregational care housing and convalescent homes to our application, of which I'll always add uses if they're wanting us to do that. We've also added, in TE number 1, and I guess I'll just get into the TE, not TEs, we do want to add the congregational care and convalescent homes, but we don't want to maintain the current uses that we have. We've added a few, and that is retail sales and services. Before, we had retail sales and services, but it had to be limited to one of the office buildings because we were wanting to do pharmacy in one of the buildings. So we'd like retail sales and services. We'd also like to add, and we've got it in our current document, eating establishments, sit-down, alcohol permitted and unlimited alcohol permitted. So we could have a restaurant on this site. With everything that's happening out there, all the restaurants back to the west, we feel like this would be a pretty good place to at least have one restaurant, possibly up on our western frontage potentially. So TE 1, I'd like to amend to just allow the uses that are in the current document that has been submitted, as well as add the congregational care housing and convalescent homes, of which is already in the document. TE number 2, I am fine with. TE 3 asks for us to provide cross-access to the property to the south, well, the property to the south is a church, and I don't know that I can provide access to something that we don't own. We are fine with cross-access in the future. If that's something that someone else wants to do across us, it could give us better access also. So we're fine with that, but we can't create a cross-access agreement when there's not one, we don't own the property, that we're cross-accessing. So I don't think we can do number 3. And then on TE number 4, I am fine with the western boundary of Track 2 having a 25-foot setback, but as you heard in the previous case, there's a creek to our east. It's not even on our property, but they want us to have 100-foot setback on our east side, which we cannot go with. There's a sewer line, as you can see on that drawing in that shaded area, there's a sanitary sewer line that pretty much parallels the creek. It's probably 50 feet away from the creek. But again, any use on that end, we'd have to maintain the 100-year flood zone if there is any, which I don't believe there is, because again, the creek's off our property. So I'm okay with 25-foot setback on the west, but not 100 feet on the east, so.
So let me ask, the way this reads, I guess, would seem to indicate that they want you to set back 100 feet from your property line.
Yes.
But I think what they really want is for you to set back 100 feet from the creek. Do you have any idea how far away from you it is?
40, 50 feet. Sometimes it gets a little bit closer to that sewer line. It kind of zigzags through, and we can't agree to that. I mean, that's a lot of land we'd be giving up as 100-foot setback from our property line. And you've heard it now at least once today, you heard it from me last time on our last PUD we were in front of you. It's just, it's a new thing in the new plan of being 100 feet away from any riparian use, and that's a lot of land. And we really don't want to give up 100 feet on both sides of any creek, especially if the creek's not even on us. So no, we don't want to, we don't want to agree to that. I mean, that's...
Okay. Well, I just wanted to be clear about, you know, what it is they're asking for and what it is that you're objecting to.
Sure, sure.
When you say you would be okay with cross-access in the future if somebody wants to do that, is there a way that you can provide, I don't know what, space for it, or here's where the curb cut would go, or... where the curb cut would go, or if there were one, we'd do it here?
Well, here's the thing, Track One, as you see on that drawing, is already, already constructed.
All right.
So, the parking lot, I mean, the east 75%, or west 75% of Track One is already developed.
Right.
So, the only cross-access that could happen would be over on that far east side. And we'd be fine with that, depending on what the use is. You know, we don't want to just carte blanche, say you can have access across the property not knowing who that user is. You know what I mean?
And, and who's going to maintain it, and are they going to contribute to the use, you know?
Right, yes, sir.
No, I'm not, I'm not trying to...
Yes, sir, yeah.
Physically, I guess, is what I meant.
Physically, we could do that, yes.
Okay.
What we're saying is that we want to, the PUD to allow for cross-access to the north and south, not require it, say it may be permitted.
We will allow, it could be permitted.
And physically, it would be provided for.
Subject to, subject to both parties agreeing to the uses or whatever, because it could help us, too. I mean, it's a church, it's Westernwood Baptist Church, I think, it's been there for a long time, probably will stay there a long time. It's, I mean, so.
So, we could amend T, you would be in agreement that we could amend TE Number Three to say the PUD will, will allow for the potential for cross-access?
Yes, sir.
Is that the right way to verbalize that?
Yes, yeah.
Sarah, somebody? You're waving. Yeah?
Hey, all we're saying is in 9.1, hi, Brian.
Sir.
In 9.8.4, cross-access shall be permitted between all lots and all development parcels and the adjacent property to the north. That's the way it reads now, and we want to add to the south, so that if that opportunity exists, it's not prohibited at that time.
We will not prohibit cross-access.
Thank you.
To the north or to the south.
So, then, so then, T?
Yeah. I like how Councilman, Commissioner Cravens put it, that it's still subject to, both parties agreeing, to allow that to happen, so.
Okay. Then, there was something about landscaping.
That's Number Two, TE Number Two, and we're fine with that.
Okay.
I agreed to one of your TEs, complete, as written. We're fine.
Is there anybody else here today who wants to be heard on this item? There's not anybody else here today, period. Commissioners, do we have any other questions?
Yeah, just for Commissioner Cravens to repeat his description of TE Three.
Well, and what did we decide on the use units? Did you get that? The use units that we were, your comments on TE One, the use units were existing in your current PUD, you just wanted to keep them, staff asked you to remove them, is that what you're trying to?
Yeah, we want to keep what's in our original PUD, but we want to add a few more for this PUD. This is a brand-new PUD. So, we want to add congregate care housing and convalescent homes.
Okay.
I want to add eating establishments, 8300.38.
But those are already in the document.
Yeah, I was about to say, those are... They're in the document, yes.
Yeah, that's the document.
Yeah, 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 nothing that it's not in the document.
Got it.
Yeah, you're just comparing what the PUD, if it's what it now.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, I think that the issue with this was that you were also adding a residential use?
Senior independent living.
Correct.
And that was suggested that we did that. There's a Springstone or Oak Ridge Springs Hospital is to our east, and it was suggested that we may want to have this use be allowed on this property, so.
And I think that that was what the staff recommendation was trying to address, is because in these employment reserve areas, residential that requires kind of a come-and-go or a single-family type of structure is typically a deterrent for the concentration of other uses.
Thank you, ma'am.
That a congregate care facility wouldn't generate the trips and...
We can eliminate senior, senior independent living, that's fine.
Okay.
Not a problem.
So, that would be 8200.13.
8200.1, yes, sir.
Okay. I just have one question before we do motions. This 100-foot setback from the stream does come up almost universally. Help remind me, what, what is the intention for including that as a part of the comp plan and planning staff's review, and what are we doing by amending that on a, on a almost universal basis as well?
All right. The section in the conference of plan that talks about the objectives for riparian areas are to preserve habitat, connectivity, water quality, and stormwater management. The 100-foot setback from certain types of streams, not all streams, but streams that are classified by the USGS as intermittent or perennial streams, often meander. And so, this is just in an attempt to create a buffer area around those streams where you don't have any buildings, so that the natural flow and habitat of the stream could change over time, could be maintained. So, there are several best practices listed in the comp plan in terms of whatever existing conditions and specific situations exist on that site. There are layers, Zone One, Zone Two, Zone Three, the width of the buffer, a lot of direction that is given in the comp plan for how you would address stream, habitat restoration, mitigation, and preservation. So, what we're citing in here is what the highest and best practice would be for habitat protection and flood control.
But because all streams are not the same, is there a way that in, in the staff reports on these recommendations, we could be told if the riparian area that's at issue in a specific application is one of greater concern? Because I think what's happening is this is becoming, for, at least for me, as I review it, I don't give any concern to it anymore because I know the applicants are going to argue against it. Do you see what I'm saying?
I understand, yep. Some direction is also provided for the applicant, so that if less than 100-foot buffer is proposed by the applicant, that the development should demonstrate that the objectives of habitat preservation, connectivity, stormwater management, and flood control are addressed. So, within the engineering or proposed engineering of the site, the applicant could suggest other ways to mitigate with a, with a narrower buffer.
Got it. What page are you reading from there?
It's Page 95, the top bullet on Page 95.
Okay. So, I just wanted to, didn't mean to derail us there, but I just want to understand this because it comes up with regularity, so I'm going to do some homework.
I'm glad we're discussing it because it's going to, you're going to hear it a lot. Yes, sir.
Well, it seems to me to be particularly problematic where you're talking about, you know, as creeks tend to do, especially, you know, ones that run wild, they just, not only they meander, but they double back and they crisscross, and they, I mean, just to strike 100 feet from what where is kind of an issue.
No, I totally agree, as, as is just a universal statement that we're going to require a setback from a stream 100 feet just because, when it's, when there are differences and variations, or potential engineering solutions that could essentially fix the same problem that the staff report is trying to protect, or that the comp plan is trying to set out, without limiting the use of somebody's site unnecessarily. I just think there's a balance, and I just want to understand what that is.
Well, yeah, and I think, you know, the, the various goals there are, we don't always have the information on a case-by-case basis to know what is the priority, whether it's the stormwater management, or whether it's the habitat protection. Those are two very different things, so. I, I agree, this is something we need to be a little bit more, both aware of and dig into a little bit more, kind of figure out a better approach.
And I believe when we had these discussions, when we were developing these policies in the conference of plan, that 100-foot buffer was an ample space that we would suggest, if you can make that work on your site, if you had an engineering approach that you're offering for mitigation, as we are not engineers and we are not out doing surveys on those sites, we, it's a, it's an alert. It is a checkmark to say, come propose and show us what's going on with your site, so that you can propose an engineering solution that will reach our goals, the expectations and the intent of what this is trying to do. So, that's, we, we do want to elicit this type of discussion, for you to ask the question, how are you going to mitigate water quality, flood control, erosion, habitat protection, connectivity? And typically, an applicant will come up and suggest something. A lot of times, it's that we're going to stay out of the floodplain, but if there are, if there's extensive habitat in the area, maybe the floodplain isn't enough, and that might be a point that you would negotiate.
So, just the wording on TE Three?
Yeah, so, where we landed there, correct me if I'm wrong, so, we're going to basically amend TE Three. And PUD 1544, the PUD that we're amending today, or we're changing from today, there was language in there that provided that cross-access shall be permitted to the north of the site, as outlined in that PUD, and that language is going to be expanded into this PUD to also include land to the, to the south, right?
Yeah.
Right? Right? North and south.
It's permitted.
Permitted.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So, so just, instead of, in TE Three, just change the word provide to permit?
You can. Yep.
So, I guess I move approval of Item 17, subject to the following changes in TE One. I guess we're adding the use of senior living, 8200.1, no.
No, adding the congregate care and convalescent homes.
And the other ones that are in the document, and eliminating senior independent living.
Right.
We're adding congregate care?
In place of senior living.
In place of senior living.
Yes.
Okay. And we are amending TE Three, changing it to read permit for cross-access with the property to the south in Section 9.8.4. And in TE Number Four, we are eliminating the, we are, it will read as follows, in 9.13 setback regulations, change the western boundary setback line to 25 feet, period.
I have a motion and a second to approve Item Number 17 as amended. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you. Glad you sound better.
The remaining items on the docket have been continued to the next meeting. That was our last item.
We passed Number Eight to the end of the docket. I don't see anybody here. Is there anybody here who wants to be heard on Item Number Eight? If not, let's, I'll take a motion to continue it.
Make a motion to continue Item Number Eight to the April 11, 2019 meeting.
Second.
Staff, will you alert the applicant that we've continued them? I have a motion, a second, to continue Item Number Eight. Would you cast your votes, please? It's so continued. Communications and reports, planning commission committees, there aren't any planning commission members. Anybody have anything they want to share?
Surprisingly, I don't.
I was just wondering if anybody was going to attend the placemaking conference next week?
Yes.
Besides you or Aubrey?
It's really, it's really worthwhile, if you have the time and can attend. It's, it's always very interesting. Planning Department, Development Services, Municipal Counselor, Citizens to be Heard, Other Business. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
I have a motion, a second, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.